Good morning and welcome to the February 18, 2020 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Roll call please.
Supervisor Bronson, Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valdez.
Present.
Chairman Elias.
Present, I'm present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Very good. Um, we have an invocation to be offered by Pastor Robert Allen from New Life Pentecostal Church. Thank you for being here Pastor. To be followed by the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Supervisor Valdez. Pastor, please, everybody who can, please stand.
Lord Jesus, we thank you God for the opportunity we have to be here today. And I pray for this board and every member on it that God your wisdom would be granted unto them. That every decision made today would be the right decision according to you. Pray you'll bless everyone here, help the meeting God to be peaceful and in order. And let your spirit be here throughout the day. And we give thanks and honor to you for our freedom to have these meetings. And we thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the presence of these.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, the pastor already left. I didn't even get to say thank you. That's okay. We have one change to our agenda for this morning. On page four, item 18, staff request decided to be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of March 17, 2020. So hearing no objections, that'll be the one change to our agenda today. Supervisor Bronson's favorite part of the movie meaning is always pause for pause. So without any further ado, we'll address our new dog. What's the dog's name today?
Tessa.
Sharon. Oh, no.
It's not quite that. Her name's Tessa, but that'd be a great name.
Tessa?
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Perfect.
You're right, Sharon.
That'd be great, thanks. So this is Tessa and she's actually kind of the perfect dog. I know I say that pretty much every week, but she really is. She's two years old, she's been around kids, she really likes being around kids. And she is housebroken, she rides in the car really well, she's pretty quiet. And she just spent a week in the shelter, in the kennel with one of our shelter managers, Michelle Figueroa. We call it in the doghouse with Fig. And she had a blast. If you look at those live streams, you see her hanging up in the background, throwing toys, knocking Michelle off of the couch. It was a lot of fun. But the point of that was to talk about how stressful it can be in the shelter at night. Maybe not for her because she had a human kennel mate, but for some of the other dogs it can be kind of overwhelming. So we wanted to talk about the importance of fostering and why it's important to get dogs out, even if it's just for a moment. So we wanted to highlight our Day Trips program and Paw Jammer Party program because we like puns. And you can take a dog home for a few hours or overnight, or for a weekend, or forever, which is even better. And you can take her home for a zero dollar adoption fee and she has a $20 licensing fee like all dogs. But yeah, we'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Now that's a dog that would look really good attached to a U of A student. That's what I would say. There's a number of them I see in the audience, I think. One of the journalism classes. No dog lovers, nobody smiling, everybody's frowning. Ah, I see. Okay, good. Um, I hope y'all have a good day here at the Board of Supervisors anyways. Um, we're gonna go ahead and start with our presentations and proclamations. We have a couple of them, three of them, to do this morning. And the first one is on the regular agenda, item five, Journey to Success Day in Pima County. I'll move the item.
Sorry?
Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Supervisor Christie, please. He's gonna make the presentation, so Mike Smith, Harrison Blackwell, Robin Reynolds, Suzanne Reeves, Don Weaver, and if you're here, come on, there you go, there you were. Thank you so much for the work you do over at Adult Probation. Very important to the rest of our community and helps us keep everybody safe. Kind of go on both sides of Steve there, that way he doesn't look so alone.
Whereas, the mission of the Pima County Adult Probation Department includes facilitating positive behavioral change in probationers through evidence-based practices while striving to achieve the highest standards in the administration of criminal justice and community corrections. And whereas, positive reinforcement and incentives related to targeted interventions help probationers lead successful, crime-free lives. And whereas, the Pima County Adult Probation's Journey to Success program provides probationers a path to change through positive accounts of sustained achievements, appreciation for sincere motivation, and responsible steps towards recovery and changed behaviors. And whereas, recognition of these individuals celebrates their journey, honors their long-term behavioral change, and celebrates their accomplishments, thereby increasing community safety and reducing recidivism. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 18, 2020, to be Journey to Success Day in Pima County, and encourages all Pima County residents to support the Journey to Success program in the administration of probation supervision passed and adopted this 18th day of February, 2020.
Congratulations.
Chris Button or anything? No, just. Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that this Monday, February 24th, would be our first recognition event at the Southside Office, which is located at 2695 East Tomaway, where we will recognize 17 participants in our first recognition ceremony at that time, at 6:30 in the evening at the Southside Office. Thank you.
Let's give some more recognition to the great work these folks do. Thanks a lot, man. Good to see you. Right? Good, I look forward to your event and I've been to a couple of drug court graduations. Well, actually several, more than a couple. But they're always good events and talk about inspiring from people that are on probation and a good chance to recognize our adult probation employees and how hard they work at helping people get straight once they get out of prison or jail and all that kind of stuff. And we have to remember that most everybody who goes in comes out and they're on the street with the rest of us every single day. And so everything we can do to help them get straight and live a better life is critical to all of us. So thank you for your work, do appreciate that. Our next presentation is item one on the addendum. And this item placed on there by Sharon Bronson. Sharon?
I will move the item, I know it's a presentation.
That's okay, that's great, thank you. Motion in a second, discussion, objections. Karen Jeff, it passed unanimously, so come on up, please.
You're all welcome, all the board members, to join us if you want. Well, as you know, PAC is my favorite moment of the board meeting and I really wanna thank Karen and Jeff Caesar and Jessica and Tim Ronstadt because of their generosity, we have a gift to Pima Animal Care Center and Pima County wishes to recognize them, friends of our four-legged companions who facilitated a much-needed gift to Pima Animal Care Center. The Caesars and the Ronstads had, well, the Caesars had a friend and the Ronstads had a relative, your mother, who passed away just yesterday, today, a couple weeks ago, right before they donated. I worked with Jeff and Karen to ensure the gift went towards a 4,000 pound donation of wet food for pets in the shelter as well as foster pets. This type of fresh west wet food is invaluable for our pets who have medical or dental issues especially. Jessica and Pete Ronstadt delivered the food to PAC on January 31st. So on behalf of the citizens of Pima County, we offer our sincere appreciation to the Caesars, the Ronstads, and all who assist our furry friends at Pima Animal Care Center. Thank you so much. And Jessica, if you'd like to say a few words.
I wanna say thank you for this honor and mainly my mother-in-law Christina Davis gave almost all of her life to fosters and rescues and helping make sure that food got, didn't matter if it was to Hurricane Katrina or wherever, she just did everything she could do for any animal that was suffering.
And I wanna thank Karen and of course the Ronstadt, but I also wanna thank Sharon Bronson who made this happen because without Supervisor Bronson, you know, we couldn't have coordinated all this. And I wanna thank Mrs. Bronson for making this happen for the Ronstadt family. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. No, actually, you know, when Jeff calls or any of our constituents, they matter and we need to listen to them. And I, this is probably one of the best things I've done since I've been elected and I really, really appreciate you reaching out and helping us. Thank you.
Okay, that was my exercise for the day. J-TED governing board here with us, or some members of it, some leadership, anyways. Whole bunch of people, but I'm gonna move the item. Motion in a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. So I would invite Amanda Smeza, or is that Sims-Sameza? I'm sorry. Greg DeOno, Alex Hockeman, Brenda Mariette, and I think that's it. I don't know, is anybody else here? Come on up if you are, please come. Kathy Prater, we can say your name out loud and you can scream it into the microphone if you want to. Okay, come on up around, don't stand back. We'll do it like we're friends. Except for Alex. I'm just kidding, 'cause he's a big tease too, just like me. J-TED, and a really important work that they do in educating our youth and creating opportunities for folks that make a difference throughout their lives. And having those kind of careers that are out there in the working world of plumbing and electrical and public safety and all those important things changes lives and changes the lives of families. And I know from where I speak, my father was a printer and he was in his union for 62 years, but he started his printing career at Tucson High in printing classes when we used to do this work at our high schools. Unfortunately, we were able to lead a good life and find success here in Tucson, along with plenty of other Elias's, but it was because of that ability to start that career in high school. And it made a big difference. And so the work that these folks are doing right now with our high school students is absolutely critical, it's very important, and we should really be proud of them and proud of all their students, I think, so. We're gonna give them a round of applause before I read this thing. Thank you. Whereas, February 2020 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas, Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic technical and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas, students in Career and Technical Education programs in Pima County gain these employability skills through the Pima County Joint Technical Education District in partnership with 14 local school districts. Working together with 14 different school districts, that would drive you crazy. I mean, they're good partners, I'm not saying that they're not. I'm just saying that they're all very different, let me tell you. Why are you laughing? Whereas, Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration, opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which in Pima County has led to a laudable 98% graduation rate for students who complete J-TED CTE program. Now that deserves a round of applause, because then nobody gets to that 98% level of graduation. And isn't that quite a statement? Whereas, Career and Technical Education prepares students, including more than 200,000 through J-TED, for these and other fulfilling careers by operating integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education with industry-recognized credentials. And whereas, Career and Technical Education programs ensure that employers have access to qualified and thriving workforce that in Pima County contributes 34 million annually to our local economy and helps us ensure America has a strong and competitive economy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim this month of February, 2020, to be Career and Technical Education Month, and urges all citizens, let me say that again, and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education Programs in Pima County, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Passed and adopted this 18th day of February, 2020.
This is the one that should be speaking because she's the one that does all the work. Kathy Prater is our superintendent. We have all of Pima County, Southern Penalt County, and a large portion of Santa Cruz County in the school districts that you were mentioning, so you can see that we have quite a broad base. We have 18,000 kids in the program, and I'm gonna let Kathy do the speaking because she's our A number one person.
Thank you, Mr. Hockeman. I just would like to thank our Pima County Board of Supervisors for your support from the very beginning when J-TED was formed in 2007. Thank you so much for your continued support as well as our Pima County Administration. So thank you also to the citizens of Pima County for your support. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but each year our program completers, when they go out into the workplace, they are contributing 34 million a year to our local economy. So thank you all very much.
We're on to call to the public. And we have a number of cards that have been submitted today, probably seven or eight. I'm gonna ask everybody to please make sure their cellphones are off. I heard one earlier and I didn't say anything at that point, but please make sure they are so that while other speakers are commenting, we are showing the proper respect. During the past year, we've had incidences of people making ugly racist comments, people cursing, people being derisive towards individuals who are making comments at the podium, people yelling out from their seats. If you do any of these things, you will be removed from the Board of Supervisors meeting and I'm apologetic about that, but I'm afraid that's what past behavior has brought us to. And so I would ask you to please refrain from doing any of those things, but rather be respectful. All our comments are welcome and certainly admissible and respectable, so that's all fine with me. But we are going to be nice in the room. So, we're gonna start today with Raquel Barronow, who's gonna be our first speaker. Raquel, if you've come forward, please, and give us your name for the record and three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, hi, my name is Raquel Barronow, I live at 819 East Lee Street, and I'm here today to talk to you about my lawsuit against the county. It is Raquel Barronow versus Pima County. It's been a long, it's been a year since this whole thing started. I applied to get a little land back that the county took from me many years ago, took from my lot many years ago. They don't need it and they won't give it back. And it's all because some lady, without giving a reason and a stupid statute here, that the county attorney's making a big deal out of up in Maricopa County, they, you guys vote on, you take the responsibility, and if the woman doesn't have a reasonable reason to oppose this abandonment, then they allow people to get the property that the county no longer needs. So I've got a, according to my calculations, the county is supposed to reply today, but I did make a mistake on my waiver of service of summons, but I corrected it when I filed it, so I don't know if you're gonna reply today or tomorrow, but I have very, very little faith in these county courts or the county attorney. They play stupid games there. I've been in the basement of this place and maybe I'll tell you what happened. I first came to Tucson in 1980 to study at the University of Arizona here. And while I was doing research, I just happened to pick this book off the shelf, it was called Coup de Tempe, America, and I thought, what a joke. I said, man, I'm just gonna read this for the fun of it. So I started reading it and I went to the government documents, the Warren Commission Report, and the House Select Committee on Assassinations Reports, and all these other things. And I came to the conclusion that the CIA killed JFK. And so I went around to the university, I had a sign here. I was downtown, this is like 1983, on the day Kennedy was assassinated, and Chuck Huckleberry's birthday too. And I went, and the police were always arresting me and they'd throw me in jail, especially the University of Arizona police. So they threw me in jail and I posted bond with some money that had 666 marked on it, that's another story. But, so they had federal charges against me and I was in the federal prison there. And so I had Fred Kay as the federal probation officer, George Robles, who was previously the city of South Tucson chief of police, Frank Zapata, who later became a federal judge, and Isabel Garcia Gallegos. They were all sitting in the same room with me and we were talking about the Kennedy assassination. And Garcia, well, Garcia walked in and she goes, I just got back from the prison and somebody told me that they murdered somebody, what should I do about it? So Fred Kay and everybody else started laughing and said, I didn't hear anything. So that's my experience in, oh, in the chorus here, one of them. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Raquel. Our next speaker's going to be Robert Royce. Robert, thank you for being here, being patient with us today. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, I'm Robert Royce. This is just a little housekeeping presentation. I noted a little annoyance after my last off-agenda presentation a month ago, so I just wanted to explain myself. If I talk about my adventures in Mexico, there's a reason for it, because people have stood right here in this space and bad-mouthed the Mexican people, which, after three years and literally hundreds of people taking care of me, I mean, I find that, I can't say unacceptable, people have the right to speak, but I also have the right to respond. And if I talk about some of my pleasant adventures in Mexico, it's too, to get through to people that there's a nation full of good people down there and they should never be confused with the actions of their criminal element. On another subject, another point, I've done probably over 400 city council presentations between here and Tucson and Fayetteville. In Fayetteville, I promised some new city government and a better future for Fayetteville. And I backed it up with 100 TV, radio, newspaper interviews, but also over 100 city council presentations. And Fayetteville's better future would never have happened unless I was up there in everyone's favor. I was very unpopular for two and a half years among the good old boys. And when we won the election, suddenly, the new government is so overwhelmingly popular that it was okay. Here I am, 19 years into this here in Tucson, and I've accomplished very little in 270 city council presentations, 187 episodes of a new city government for Tucson, and 43 episodes of Thomas Jefferson Still Lives. But I have not given up. I still have hopes of a better future for Tucson, so if, you don't get the point I'm trying to make when I stand here, there is a point, and I just ask for your patience, which I have gotten. I've been very, I mean, I've been impressed, you have not turned a single person away from this podium in the year that I've been coming to these meetings regularly, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Robert. We appreciate you being here as well. Our next speaker's gonna, excuse me, is gonna be Gail Hartman. Gail, thank you for being here, and come on up, you give us your name, and you have 35 minutes? No, I'm just kidding, only three minutes for you, Gail.
I don't think so. And I apologize for this, I'm having the local coronavirus, which I don't wanna give to anybody, don't even say that, yeah. This is the Pima County coronavirus. So my name is Gail Hartman. Right, that's a good point, shouldn't make a joke about that. I'm here in my role as- Copper mine in the Santa Rita Mountains. So, I wanted to come today to update you on the situation, because we sort of have a little bit of new news. I'm sure you all remember that the end of July of twenty nineteen, Judge James Soto decided that the mine could not proceed as it was planning to do so. And then, in late December of twenty nineteen, both Hudbay and the federal government appealed that decision. So, we finally just got the more or less schedule of the appeal. It could change modestly, but opening briefs from Hudbay and the feds must be submitted in early April. This is the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, by the way. Our responses, or our attorneys' responses to those briefs will be due within sixty days after that, so that's probably early June. And in oral arguments, will probably not be scheduled until late twenty twenty or even twenty twenty-one. We know that that court is somewhat backlogged. Now, also, a couple of weeks ago, Judge Soto issued another decision that overturned the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's approval of the mine because of threats to jaguars and other endangered species. And that very likely may be appealed as well. We haven't heard, but that would again be sixty days for the other side to decide what they're gonna do. So, I did want to say before I sit down that, as you recall, I hope most of you would recall, that the Board of Supervisors has twice passed resolutions opposing the mine over the years, which I thank you very much. And as I'm sure you're also aware, for many years, the board has consisted of two Republicans and three Democrats. And during most of that time, the votes on environmental issues and opposing the Rosemont Mine were unanimous. That is, all five supervisors opposed the mine. In recent years, that has changed. Only three supervisors, all Democrats, have opposed the mine. And I have to say, I don't really understand why that is. It seems to me it's very important to protect this place we call home, the Sonora Desert and the surrounding mountains. And any positive results of this mine will be very short-lived, while the negative impacts will just go on practically forever, certainly in perpetuity. Also, in southeastern Pima County and Santa Cruz County as well, the mine is extremely unpopular among virtually everyone, Republicans and Democrats. So, thank you for your support, and I hope to see it be unanimous in the future.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate your work and your comments. Our next speaker's gonna be Stephen Brown. Mr. Brown, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your patience, and if you'd give us your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is Stephen Brown, and I am a Pima County native, product of Pima County Schools, District Number Thirty-nine. Continental, graduated from Continental Elementary School. The reason I went to school there is I grew up in the Santa Rita Mountains. I was born in the Santa Rita Mountains, and they're the ground beneath my heart, always have been. And I wanted to reiterate what our president said, thanking the board for your support over the years of our efforts to have a thorough examination of the effects of the Rosemont Mine, and to support efforts to make sure that the laws are followed, which we now fortunately are able to do. We appreciate that. My grandfather came here in eighteen ninety-three, and we've had Republicans, we've had Democrats, we've had all kinds of people in our family over those years. And I think that this is something, that the beauty of those mountains benefits everybody. Hunters, mountain bikers, off-road folk, hikers. The Arizona Trail runs right through Rosemont Valley, as you know. And I think it's really a resource that the county can use and be supportive of forever for everyone who lives in the county. I'm, am I retired here? I'm turning seventy-one next month, which means I only work three part-time jobs, one of which is I continue my career as an educator. I teach at Tucson Unified School District, Carpio School, teach Spanish there. And one of the points I make with my students is one of the wonderful things about Spanish and English is that there's words that are both nouns and verbs. And one of those words is spelled T-E-A-R. We say, I tear up, or I tear up. And I tear up when I go out into the Santa Rita's because they're my home. And I love those mountains, and I remember sometime when I had to work back east, I started looking for those mountains as soon as the plane started out from El Paso, and I tear up when I saw those mountains. And so, that's the verb that I like to use in English, tear up, la grima en español. And I think that those mountains are a real source of beauty and a real source of pride for everyone who lives in Pima County, who recreates, who enjoys, watches birds or whatever. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your support over the years and for your continuing support in our efforts to keep those mountains beautiful, keep them wild, and give el jefe un sitio para vivir. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker's going to be Steve Diamond. Mr. Diamond, if you'd please come forward, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors, and please give us your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond. I'm a District Four resident, and I am the Democratic candidate for supervisor in District Four. I want to thank the majority for voting to reject the twenty-eighteen Stone Garden Grant. Unfortunately, as Supervisor Bronson said two weeks ago, everyone loses this way, but the other way, everyone loses even more so. This way at least opens the door to local solutions designed to benefit our communities, not imposed by the same federal government that created the problems in the first place. In that vein, I support the proposed rural law enforcement district. I suggest you agree to fund it, contingent on increased transparency from and oversight of the Sheriff's Department. I know some steps have been taken, but they aren't sufficient. The new Sheriff's Citizens Advisory Committee, for instance, does not offer real transparency. I propose that as part of the package, you create a new improved version of the much maligned CLEPSI, a community law enforcement partnership commission that has a broader oversight mandate, not only to review grants, but also to review PCSD operations. I know there will be resistance to this idea, but you know, I've heard so many lies emanate from this dais about that commission, so much slander about people who served it honorably and tirelessly. Let's at least have the integrity to be truthful advocates for our causes. We really should be careful what we say about people. So, what about the Stone Garden Grant for federal fiscal year twenty nineteen? You must reject that, too. None of the proposed mitigating modifications will be in place, and besides, nothing can possibly mitigate the damage to the community caused when our deputies worked for the feds instead of for us. And speaking of the twenty nineteen grant, did you know that K gun nine reported yesterday evening that you'd be considering it today? They didn't bother to check their facts, and you might want to look into where they got the story. Going forward, my vision is that the federal government will adopt sane humane immigration policies and sane humane drug laws, that they will end the abhorrent military occupation of our borderlands by their Border Patrol Army, that they will make our current considerations unnecessary. Until that day, let's lobby for those changes, and let's work locally to protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Okay, our next speaker's going to be Michael Stanley. Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If you'd give us your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
My name is Michael Stanley. I am president of the Mount Lemon Homeowners Association, and I'm here on the hearing for the Mount Lemon Lodge. The Mount Lemon Homeowners Association supports this development. As you know, we on Mount Lemon have had the fire back seventeen, eighteen years ago now, the Aspen Fire, which really caused devastation to our whole community. Prior to that, we had a school, we had businesses, we had fourteen businesses, and we've really slowly come out of being able to create a viable community again. The economic development of the community is very essential, and again, the Mount Lemon Homeowners Association is supporting that. I'm also the manager of the Mount Lemon Water District, Domestic Water Improvement District, and we also support that. We are in the business of selling domestic water, and we need commercial support and home support. We have increased our homeowner, we've increased our base of our homeowners association. Prior to the fire, we had four hundred and twenty-five services. We lost three hundred and ten in the fire. We're back to three hundred now. So, we really want to support the development and the businesses on Mount Lemon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Our next speaker's gonna be Bob Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman, thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
My name is Robert Zimmerman. Zimmerman has been very active in the business district up on Mount Lemon since the early forties. And my father, Tony Zimmerman, started several of the businesses. Fran and I, plus children and grandchildren, are actively running our several businesses. Historically, there were three hotels which unfortunately burned. My family is very supportive of Diana Osborne Osborn's plan to build a much-needed hotel. She is a long-term, mountain-experienced person. Any questions?
We're not really allowed to ask questions during a call to the audience, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for your comments, and we appreciate you being here. Our next speaker's gonna be Amy Shoner. Did I get that right? I might have read it wrong. I'm sorry.
You did fine. Thank you.
Please come up, and thank you for your patience, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors after giving your name for the record.
My name is Amy Shoner. I've been a Pima County resident now for forty years. I came here for college. I enjoy a beautiful home near River and Swan, and a cabin on Mount Lemon for the last five years. What I've learned is the trustworthy value that Diana Osborne expresses in everything she decides and does. She knows what's good for our mountain. She'll do what's right for Pima County and all those visitors that come up and enjoy Mount Lemon. I'm fully in support of her project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes call to the audience. We have one executive session on our agenda, which looks to me like it'll be relatively quick, so I'll entertain a motion to move into exact.
So moved.
Second, motion and a second, discussion, objection, hearing none, motion carries. We'll be back very shortly, and we'll get back to business. So, we'll see you in a minute. I'd like to call back to order the February 18, 2020 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We've been in executive session, and counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Executive session item three on the addendum involves Pima County Board of Supervisors versus Bill Staples Tax Court Case Number 2019-118. County Attorney's Office recommends defending the counterclaim as discussed in executive session.
Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the county attorney's recommendation, discussion, objections.
I object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. Motion carries, board one. Very good. Okay. Next item we have is the approval of the consent calendar, which is item seven on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if no one wants to divide the question, I'll move consent in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Very good. Normally, that's a bit of a struggle, you guys, so we're doing good. Item eight, board of supervisors' budget hearing scheduled for fiscal year 2020-21. Chair, move the item.
Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a second? Oh, okay.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, Supervisor Valdez, please.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to propose a couple of different things on this particular item. First of all, I think that we are probably better off if we merge these hearings into the already existing board meetings on the schedule. But I'd also like to suggest a couple of different changes to these hearings. Because we seem to get different presentations based on different departments. I also want to direct the county administrator to come up with a set of five to 10 questions upon which the departments can then inform the board of the specific budgetary needs. And then, obviously, if the board, if individual board members have specific questions they want to deal with, that we submit them to the board for that. And that we actually cap those hearings not to exceed 10, or cap the individual presentation of the departments not to exceed 10 minutes. And then, obviously, allow time for the public to interact on those specific presentations.
Mr. Chairman, my question would be, what if we, as we know, the timeframe that we get to review this stuff is very short. And sometimes, we're up the night before coming up with a question. So, if we have additional questions, do you have a problem with that? But if we have, you know, the basic ones, I don't have a problem with that.
The whole purpose of it is to structure the presentation of the departments very specifically. And then, we're open on our Q and A.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, question to Supervisor Valdez. Are you suggesting, though, that we structure the budget hearings as separate hearings from the regular meetings?
No. That they be merged into the regular meeting.
But they're actually, will be, they actually will be advertised as budget hearings.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would prefer that the budget hearings be held separately from the regular meetings, and be given the attention of the staff and the public that something of this nature deserves. And that there's no blending of regular meeting versus budget meetings.
I don't see it being that difficult of an issue to resolve. But why don't we get it all on paper so that everybody knows what we're looking at, and we can do that at the next meeting? Does that sound good? I'll withdraw my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the item for the next meeting to incorporate the items that we discussed.
Thank you, that's great.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Very good. Okay, we're on to item nine.
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item nine, petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waiver. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 10 is a final plat with assurances. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 11, fleet services annual vehicle exemptions. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 12 is a pre-treatment settlement agreement.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item 13 is impact fee land use assumptions report and infrastructure improvement plan.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. You know, I have some concerns about this, because we really haven't discussed the other types of impact fees that are approved under statute. Instead, this is just focused on roads. And so, I'm fine with approving it, but I think we need to instruct staff to take a look at other types of impact fees. Because I've sat on this board when we did not have enough money for parks. We did not have enough money for other improvements that were necessary related to growth and the results of what happens when you can't keep up with infrastructure development. So, to me, I would like to at least hear some discussion of that from our staff, and some kind of recommendations.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Again, I'm going to bring up Thornidale Road. And I know Chuck is looking strictly at the unincorporated area. Morana is one of the fastest-growing areas in Pima County. And those roads are going to get used. We can't be shortsighted and not look at that road. It needs to be widened. The traffic backs up tremendously. And anyone that says they're concerned about the environment, these cars are sitting idling, I know, because I live out in that area. And the impact fees for Thornidale Road should be set aside, because there's a whole lot of home construction on that road as well. And set them aside until we find out if we can get another source of funding. Because we already moved, I believe it was bond funds from Thornidale Road. And now, we're hearing it's 21 million to do that original widening, as was originally proposed. So, I'm still not comfortable with this, not incorporating Thornidale Road in there. Because I think saying that the growth in the unincorporated area is flat when you've got booming growth all around you is very shortsighted. And this road has been on the plan to get widened since, I think, 97. And I really can't support this if it does not include Thornidale Road. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Christie, will there not be other hearings coming up after this that can address the issues and concerns that have been expressed here? And that this, basically, from what I understand from talking to the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association and the Metropolitan Pima Alliance, is basically somewhat of an administrative move? So it can go on to the next phase, which could allow for the discussions of the concerns that have been raised here?
There's always a process available to add to the projects that we have under consideration for impact fees, but it is a process.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding of this is that the various roads and impact fee benefit areas and where those monies are going are defined in this plan. Is that not the case?
That's not in perpetuity, but go ahead. Let Administrator Lester have a go at it here, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second step in a four-step process. But to provide a little more granularity, I'd ask Mr. DeBones to explain what that full process is.
Sure. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Miller. This is a multi-step process, as has been indicated. You're on step two of four. The action in front of you today, though, is the adoption of the land use assumptions report and the infrastructure improvements plan. So that plan constitutes the roads that are eligible for improvement using impact fees once this new ordinance is adopted. So steps three and four ahead of you will be the fee study and the adoption of the fee ordinance. Today, what you are doing is adopting the land use assumptions report, if you choose to vote that way, and the infrastructure improvements plan. That plan can be modified over time to incorporate additional roadways through a process, as has been noted, so...
Mr. Chairman, and I have a question for Mr. DeBones. It can be modified over time. Right now, this is the set plan, and my understanding from the conversation with Mr. Huckleberry, this isn't going to be modified anytime soon.
Chairman, Supervisor Miller, so the way the statute is structured, it is a 10-year period that is being addressed with the adoption of these items. There is a five-year review period that comes forth, in which we are required by statute to come back through and conduct a review and make adjustments as necessary. On the Thornidale Road item, just to, again, focus on the statute and the way that it's structured, it requires that impact fees be used to address, then, the portion of new growth in the capacity that is consumed by that on roadway. So the existing volumes of road on Thornidale, and any improvements necessary to go ahead and widen that road for existing capacity, is not eligible to be funded with the impact fees under this new statutorily required ordinance adoption.
Well, that's where it gets back to the point I brought up originally, is that... Well, that's where it gets back to the point I brought up originally, is that it's very short-sighted to not look at the growth that's right around that area, which is a whole lot of growth in Morana that comes down Thornidale Road, and we all know that road is backed up. It's been at capacity, under, over capacity for many years. It needs to be widened. It's been on the plan and been pulled off, and I agreed to move some HERF funds, bond funds, that were originally slated for that road last year, just to get some road repairs done, and now the people in that area are going to continue having to deal with this backup of traffic. And this plan, and my understanding of it, based on what you just discussed, is the same as what Mr. Huckleberry said in the last meeting, and you're not going to come back and look at this for five years. I'm sorry, I can't support this. As it stands right now, there are homes, many, many homes, being built on Thornidale Road, which is going to only make the conditions worse out there, and all of those impact fees from those homes are being moved off that road, which is wrong. Thank you.
Well, as I said, Mr. DeBonis, I think, had a very good answer, and it's very bureaucratic in nature, but actually, these ordinances can be changed whenever the Board of Supervisors gains the political desire to do it. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor, I believe. Do we? I thought so. I'm losing my mind. All right, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson? Supervisor Christie? Supervisor Miller? Supervisor Valdez? Chairman Elias?
Motion carries forward one. Okay, we're on to item 14, and this is case number P19CU00014, Forest Investments LLC, North Sabino Canyon Park. And we had one call, one speaker who didn't get called, I believe, during calls to the audience, and since this is a hearing, you do have the right to speak at a hearing. So, I'm going to go ahead and start with our speaker that left out, Doug.
Mance.
Mance, I'm sorry. Doug Mance. Thank you for being patient, Mr. Mance, and I apologize for that oversight on our part, but either way, you're here, it's before the issue, and it's a hearing, and so, please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors.
Apology accepted. No problem at all. Being overlooked is the least of anybody's problem.
Yeah, helps me sometimes.
My name is Doug Mance, and I represent the Water Board up on Mount Lemon. My voting address, my registration address is 12802 North Tucson Avenue up on Mount Lemon, and I am the current board chair of the Mount Lemon Water District. We serve, as you heard from our water manager, over 300 water customers, and we store almost 2 million gallons of water that we borrow from the headwaters in Springs at the end of Carr Canyon Road and at the end of Turkey Run Road, both on Mount Lemon. I'm pleased to provide our Water District's support of this item that is before you, the Mount Lemon Hotel, and I've been informed from the developers that there are lots of low water use features that are going to be part of this development, not only fixtures, but water, and minimal bathtubs, water-efficient, minimal bathtubs, dual flush toilets. Each room is going to have just one hand sink, even though there are going to be kitchenettes in every room. There's going to be collection systems for water to water landscaping and flower boxes. The washer-dryers are going to be very low water use and use green detergents. During high season, the developer plans on taking linen, cleaning off of the mountain to, again, save water and conserve. We, up on the mountain, we take great pride in our stewardship. We do a lot of things as community members that benefit the Sky Island that is used by people from indeed all over the world and certainly from all over the county. The Osborne family has been providing this type of stewardship for generations, for four or five generations right now, so we think that this genetic makeup is going to really provide a nice project for everybody on the mountain and also everybody that visits Mount Lemon. As was mentioned by our water manager, Michael Stanley, our base of clients, customers, was halved during the course of, after the fire, the Aspen Fire in 2003, and so, we think that this is the type of project that's going to be a real linchpin event for the Mount Lemon community and move economic development forward in a very constructive and considerate way. And so, as the Water District, we do support this project, and again, thank you, Chairman, for letting me speak out of turn. Okay?
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to 14. Chair, move the item and close public hearing. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion carries. No objection. Five-zero, unanimous vote. We're on to item 16, because item 15 was continued to the meeting of 3:17:20.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
I'll move the approval of the item and close the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2020-8 and adopt Ordinance Number 2020-9.
Second.
Motion and a second, propose public hearing and approve item 16, including Resolution 2020-8 and Ordinance Number 2020-9. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the addendum, and I implore the meeting schedule, you know, I'm going to move that this item be continued to our next meeting so that we can take into account the changes that we're making to the budget hearing.
Well, this is, this is different.
I understand that, but they're all interconnected, and I was just talking to the clerk about it. It would be good if we either clarify according with amendments that would be made to it in the future, but we don't quite know what they're going to be, or we could just wait until the third, and it's all fine, everything will get approved, and it'll be.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest, I looked at this meeting schedule, and I know we have a meeting scheduled for August 4th, that's the primary day of Election Day, and I would hope that we could amend the meeting schedule to cancel the August 4th meeting.
Okay, that's another thing that we would consider and I would approve of, and so we can look at that for the next meeting. Thank you very much for noticing that, Supervisor Bronson. That's a good catch. So, I make a motion to continue this item to our next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item five, clerk of the board, petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waivers. Chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item six is Pima Animal Care Center grant application agreements.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to uniform video service license, item seven, including Resolution 2020-9.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman. I just had a question on this. This is the first time I've seen this, and I just wondered, what exactly is this for?
Council, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller. This is something that's required by legislation that was passed in the last session that requires us to adopt this uniform form, and so, it's basically just doing what the statute, the new statute requires the board to do, and that's why you haven't seen these before.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the remaining items, item eight through.
Well, could we vote on this item first?
Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't voted yet.
Hey, it'll make it better. Any objections to item number seven, Resolution 2020-9? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Supervisor Bronson?
Okay. Supervisor Miller wishes to vote on item eight separately, so I'm going to move items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Second. Mr. Chairman, I would be in favor of removing item 10 for discussion.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion, and I will move items nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item eight, Supervisor Miller.
I'll move the item for purposes of discussion.
Second.
Motion decided to approve, Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this item for the same reason as last year, that we are paying United Way close to $50,000 when our employees are doing the E-CAP program on their behalf. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will be objecting to this item as well as I have on these similar items in the past.
Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries three to two. We're on to item 10.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the item for purposes of discussion.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie?
Mr. Chairman, I know this is an administrative, administrivia type of an issue. The county is merely acting as a pass-through from the grant in aid gaming revenue funding agreement. However, its designated entity that they wish to direct the money to is the Arizona Mining Reform Coalition, and out of my past support of mining in Southern Arizona, I will be unable to approve this grant process, even though I know, realize that it is merely symbolic in nature.
It's pass-through, yeah. I understand. Okay, roll call. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I apologize. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Yes. Motion carries forward or none. That concludes the business of the Board of Supervisors meeting for today. Hearing no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.